Larry, I believe you're Vice Chairman, do you want to call this meeting order? Ready?
Yep.
So Bob.
I think you can try to use your microphones, I'd really appreciate it for the recording. Your best is your ability. I know it's a hard stuff. That's okay. You're close.
Alright, so we'll do roll call. Mr. Farrell's on here, Mr. Burns.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Mr. Presser.
Here.
Ms. Dresser.
Here.
Okay.
Alright. The minutes for, I'm sorry, the agenda for tonight, we have a motion to approve the... So move.
Second.
All over the table.
Everybody in the room say aye.
Aye.
Close. And then we have the minutes from the June 14 planning commission meeting. Any corrections on the vision meetings? From the 14th of June. Just, yeah, just one quick page.
Hold on, Larry, if you get the motion and the second, then you can talk about what the corrections.
Oh.
Larry did the second motion, not second. Now, now, I didn't see it. Thank you.
Just, yeah, no, thank you. Just one, just to correct the sense, it should be stop work or it's in the second paragraph of the third page, starting with discussions to, it says atop work order, it should just be stop work. Change of the motion to approve.
Call in favor.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Close. First, the first agenda tonight will be... The 52 to 60 North Market Street subdivision sketch plan summary presentation.
The name Jeff Ward, fifth engineers. How are you doing?
Yeah, good.
Any interest in time, if you want, I'll simply indicate what's a will comply. And I had a few questions or a few hard occasions. Before you go any further, the 52... Market Street letter, zoning letter, that was in the packet, really doesn't pertain to this property. It's actually the property across the street. When the zoning officer did it, he wrote 52 on here, and I was like, nah, this doesn't really pertain to that. But I'll clarify that with him tomorrow, but I'm pretty sure it's about the property across the street that was done for the fire company, because they were interested in buying the property. So, so if you want to set that aside for now, I'm pretty sure it does pertain, but I will clarify that, alright? Just so you're aware. Sorry, get it down.
I was saying, I was all here, I didn't even look at the end.
Okay, I guess some diverse issues left. Item one, note on the plan, but a conference board here removed as a will comply. Item two, additional dimensions as a will comply. I agree with the borrowers being within 2p, which is allowed by third, that's a will comply. Four talks about a turn-in template, prior review containing the access, question of access from a fire truck which is provided, so we have access into the site. I'll show the turn-in templates for whatever size trucks can access the site. And it says to be exiting on the north main in a forward motion. I would simply say that the moving company is going to come in more likely and back into the site on their way. So, I'll just tell you what size van will work, but logically, they're going to pretty much do what they want to do. You have good site distance, you have periods of traffic where there's not much happening here. So the balance of that as far as the motion, the turn-in motion will show. Five indicating the number of units in the existing building, and that is two units, and I thought we did have that on the plan. But we will add that. As far as handicap, I think that may go to the question of uses, as far as the number of handicap spaces. And since we're not changing anything, I didn't show them, but as requested, we've definitely showed that we have space to put in at least one behind the new building. We could do something similar to the existing apartment, however, practically speaking, no aspect of that apartment is handicapped, that's it.
And seven parking lot and accessway volume will be required.
Just one sec.
We're maintaining that's...
Just one sec, only number five.
Five?
Yeah, so to, we have, I'll remember anywhere from the, the road, do we have?
No.
Six we talked about, seven parking lot and accessway volume will be required. As part of the land development, we understand that I can add a note to the plan if that helps. And several of these are additional notes that we talked about. Eight, the county's tax map in the sketch plan talks about alley access. To be honest with you, it does access the alley, but it's all grass, hopefully there's been a payment instead of... And frankly, there's about a two or three foot drop-off. So we didn't think, depending on what happened with the garages, those who were working to the alley, we felt, we felt better that the traffic would work at this approved entrance. So we showed the alley, but we're not accessing.
Is that a borough alley?
Borough doesn't own it yet.
Okay.
So...
It's a private house, all private again.
So it is a borough alley though, right?
Well, if it's, if it's shown, then the tax map doesn't matter.
Okay.
But typically, rights to an alley go to those people that are on that plan, the alley is created through adjoining properties.
Yes.
Well, not always, if the adjoining property is not part of the plan, they're created, you don't necessarily have a right to.
Right.
And we have that situation in common places in the borough. Where there's, there's grass plots that are alley. They were considered alleys, but people have taken them and made them part of their yard.
Uh huh.
Alright, so now, they may be listed as an alley in your deed, but they're no longer an alley. Alright?
There's no easy process of the law to make...
That was my last question, yeah.
I'm, we're fine with showing some proposed buffer, I'll show it like a note, but I can't really show specifics because we're not designing, because I really don't know what's going in.
And that could be a note required during land development.
That'd be fine too, that's up to you, I mean, I could know that.
That's something you may want to say.
Yeah, so, so for that alley, you're not proposing that access factor? For that property, I will add that.
Because of the problem.
Correct. Now, I'm just kind of playing illustrations, let the layout of the two lot quicker build out existing conditions plan which require district's site condition to only one lot approved. In other words, if nothing gets built, really nothing changes, the driveway stays at the far end. Parking is already there, garages are there. So what I'll do is I can provide existing conditions plan that can better address that. That's okay. Parking and recycling, I don't know the specifics of this block, but I would think it's all on the street. Who have to do, who fill out? And I wouldn't see trash trucks here and that, I believe you will.
No, no, they wouldn't.
Okay. Same thing, I'll just add another trash, if that was a big, trash recycling, I want to just make the curbs on it. The common driveway easement will be required, we do understand that, we haven't definitely addressed that. The borough's emergency service providers provide input. I don't know that we've seen anything else.
I will, when, when the zoning officer comments, I'll make sure he has the fire warning as well.
Okay, I agree. And of course, thirteen additional comments would feature the all, which we understand. Again, our intent is to basically give a sketch plan that boroughs are comfortable with, to give us a level of comfort that we can market the property.
That's fair.
Highway Howard, Howard's in such an age, he built well in eighty-seven. He doesn't really have the patience or time, not the time, the patience, and I'll mean this in a bad way, it just doesn't, not, not, this is not in his, not in real ass anymore. McMahon, same thing, almost all will comply, turning movements will comply. Apron, we are showing, I hate to break it, we have an expert, I'll clarify it, constantly agree with him that. So one material will comply. The pedestrian access, I can show it from the parking lot to the buildings, but again, I don't know what the uses are, so I'm just showing lines on the plane. So you tell me, I mean, you want me to just do some schematic sidewalks?
So how, how was your options for you? Why don't we discuss how you would do that?
I would show a walk along the parking spaces. I mean, a connection to the back of the new unit, figuring, on their entrance there. We may have service walk from the front, but we still, I don't want to discourage people stopping, dropping people off at the front door. And then on the existing building, I'll just show where the entrances are and let figures too, and then just show walk connections on that.
So that, that would be the intent of the, of the...
Okay. Four indicates the modification required at end of apartment. Agree. At this point, you would not be submitting or... A tip from McMahon. And, you give me a minute, I just want to read the text. If hence talking about first paragraph being a core commercial, which we understand in terms of multi-family, I do not know that we're proposing any specific uses, so to have another apartment in the building, not saying that that's obviously something that we propose, like the revised property.
So, so he's doing this to sell the property?
Basically sell it, yeah.
Okay.
You know, I mean, even though it's a spec building, but you're really just meta meta, right? What somebody's going to want.
And in this day and age, to go spec building, I had to, the comments, it's quite a lot. All that is transferred, yes, it is, someone, someone's done one, that was not to do that.
And, and with material, I'll say everything, I expect that. Location stormor management is not provided. In our conversation, in the chat, we actually had a net increase in roof discovered because of the amount of stone and parking earth coming out. That said, we would still provide stormor management required, but I think Chad's comment was, nothing's required.
It's less than an acre of disturbance.
It's also less than an acre, too, because it wasn't there with conservation, right? But we're not proposing disturbance at this time, and there is no near stormor.
That would be during land development.
Yeah, during land development, and actually, it's actually a B M P, or that's, that's management practice, if you convert an eighteen to seven into bricks. Then they did not provide, again, I think the land development issue, obviously we'll put a note on the plan about buffering along the alley. But other than that, again...
Still pretty familiar.
Yes.
And just one question on that. The location stormor management, this is a part very current.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so it's not, it's all got sound wave recovery.
Well, what is, that's what Jeff's saying, is purpose not?
Yeah.
And maybe, they, they may be reducing some of that purpose.
We actually ran the numbers, we're fifty point percent reduction. So, of course, we'll indicate, and also, there are a couple of treasons, like, I'll show them, and we'll add a note that gets to be provided with land development. And I guess the zoning officer fire marshal will follow up.
I'll follow up tomorrow, and I will make sure that, make sure you see all the comments from both, at our conference room.
Questions?
So as this was listed, it was a minor subdivision sketch plan, preliminary sketch plan. So, once we get all the notes back to the zoning officer and fire marshal, hopefully, with all the work that Jeff's done, reviewing the comments from first agenda and, then their, their next step would be to make a formal subdivision plan presentation.
I don't know how it's going to go to that step.
Okay, alright.
He may basically re, have me note everything, resubmit, so the borough's comfortable, and then not submit a formal plan.
Okay. Do you want to go through the steps to make sure that when you're ready to do it?
It's marketable and doable, if there weren't any major red flags.
That, that's probably what's... And I think that the fact that they're not marketing it yet at this time, and they haven't, they don't have a buyer, and they don't have a plan for it, that the core commercial district, zoning, is not really relevant at this time.
Not yet, yeah.
But the, the owner, the purchaser, whoever would be, would have to address that for that time.
Yeah, they'll, they'll have to connect, sit down, work, evaluate uses and all of it.
So, so really, there's, there's nothing concrete.
No.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Please just look at the study.
This is one of the issues, what about concrete? We're usually dealing with much more concrete, much more dependent on plants. It's a little different for me too.
Well, and as Jeff noted, the power to try and get, make sure things are ready to go, should it want to do things, or should, would that be around?
Well, once you get me there, zoning and fire marshal, I'll go get all of this as a plan, so we can activate it.
Okay.
When does it go to council?
Well, they're going to talk about Wednesday night. I'd like to do things all in the same week, but there's a couple gentlemen who are here, who are all borough council.
Okay.
So they'll, they'll be there as well.
Okay.
And then this way, borough council here is about the same night.
Okay.
Or the same week, so then Wednesday night they're meeting, okay?
I should be here, I'm in that shop Tuesday for a tour, I'm seeing three of my grandson, having a hip we can shop in, aged six. It's a simple policy, and as, as you grow your hips, unless you're weight here, it's meant to be a right walk, unless you're weight here, the sockets go out and pushes the right back. It's going to be fun. But, what, what is the, oh, it's seventeen? Seven thirty, seven thirty? I should not be problematic in case there is, I mean, reasonable.
Yes, and I think, basically, if you're going to do will comply for all, and I can make the notes, not going to speak for you, but I will, you know, with the help of planning commission members that are here, if you're going to will comply with most of all the items on here, and then those ones that are not significant, that aren't really part of, that are part of land development?
Yes.
Will be addressed by whoever the buyer is at land development.
Do you want to respond to that, cover all this?
So you have our official division. If you want to give it to me by the problem, then we can have a discussion.
I don't know if I can get it before, end up online, because we're at four o'clock tomorrow.
Legally, we can't actually, maybe we can post it on our website tomorrow by four o'clock. We can't discuss next week.
Okay.
The state is at worst, you know, July.
Yeah, I guess the borough's going to discuss something they're going to pack on.
I don't have a letter, I'll say copies of, we have a table.
Okay.
That way, council and those that are in there, you'll know, you'll know that.
What are challenges?
Right, okay.
Do that, Jeff, don't, don't, don't draft a letter, if you have a copy of that, you want to write handnotes on it, that's fine.
Okay, that sounds good.
And then, if you're not able to be here, I can, I can share with, share with council.
But I'm, why is this supposed to be, leaving, we're leaving me for the next shift. I should be here. I have lots of months, be on, be on my wife's perch and, you know. Between all his issues, he's had more procedures, operations, he goes and takes, most of us never have, have a life on that. But he smiles because he's had a good year. Larry, I owe you a phone call, and the discussion will be played. We're down basement phase, alright?
Yes.
I'll have it for now.
Jeff, thanks.
Thank you very much.
I want to drag you out, get this done there.
I'm seeing you guys.
Alright, thank you.
You safe.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Next up, is the borough square man developing update?
So they've been released to do their work, and for the last five, six weeks, we've received an email stating that they would start work the following, we received an email Wednesday?
Yeah.
Usually Wednesday, Wednesday night, Thursday morning, that they will be working the following Monday, may I have a show of it?
There's some kind of foundation in tomorrow.
There's, there's, there was...
So very concrete, it's all very...
There was some work in there, they were doing, but very little. They show up one day, and just, and remember, they can, they're permitted to do that, they're allowed to do it. But, all the work that they do, once they get the foundations and all that in, they can provide asphalt so that we know they were put in the right location, because you don't want to put a house up and find out that the asphalt's are, it's in the wrong location. So, so he's proceeding in, in terms of parallel, but he's been notified that he can proceed, and he's been, that was that he would proceed, the last five weeks.
I'm going to release that money to him. Yes, sir.
He's been, he is, all of our obligations have been met to him, and all of his obligations have been met to the borough.
Okay.
Is there a timeline on that?
Building permits have, I believe, a five-year time limit. And it was increased from two years during recession of two thousand and eight. It was increased, that was never considered.
An example of that would be, they built perhaps in a borough, when the contractor had stopped for some time.
Center Square?
Center Square, yeah.
And, and that is always a topic, when, when you're going to, he's got time, he's got time.
Yeah, and, and remember, they did those in phases, as they were sold. And they didn't apply for all the building permits until, like, the borough ones, they did first. And then, and that little square there, it was borough township first, but they did that one section. They didn't apply for the other building permits, so they hadn't resolved. But yes, I believe it was, it was increased to five years.
Is that the, the borough council?
No, the state.
Oh, okay.
The state did it in the...
They're kind of in a tough time, for a recession of two thousand and eight, that was recently.
No, I think it's, you know, they have bigger, better lobbyists than, and, and it's more, they're, they're protecting their business. And remember, it's all real estate, so they probably, they're one of the probably top five biggest lobbyists up in the state house.
For the most part, it's not a problem, so you run into something like that.
Right. And he has, he has a bunch of other projects don't want that are bigger and more expensive than this.
That's what's there, so our, our residents, in chat, I'm like, you know, just be good with that. Yeah, you don't like it, Howard. Right, and, and any other questions related right here?
Yeah. Good.
Alright, that's important.
So spoke with the developer, and because of all of his projects, he is in the same slowdown. Equipment, personnel, material, all that for his other projects, and he just hasn't gotten around to readdressing all the issues that he needs to bring, submit a plan, a preliminary plan for approval, which is what he wants to do, but he has some challenges, as we all know. And he needs to get his other projects done, so he can move on to this, so he, he may not be here for long.
It's, it's...
Who does?
Any other questions on that?
Yep.
Okay, forty-three rolls of paper.
So that project was approved by borough council, and they are going through the permitting process now. They, there was a resolution in the packet of referral, council approving the plan, and, you know, he has a lot of work to do on his side, getting his permits and approve the start construction.
Questions?
He has the same challenges that everybody else has had. Trying to find the true old people to do the work.
Certification.
So, as we spoke previously, the borough had been higher general code to go through codification of the borough ordinances. Last time they were done was two thousand and twelve, and by the time they're going to be done, it's on ten years old. So Jamie has been working with the solicitor and the engineer, and the editorial and legal analysis from general code, and has returned all of that information to them, and the next phase of part would be them putting everything into the context where it should be, and then getting some drafts out to the borough for review. So this will, you know, definitely take us over into twenty twenty-two. Once it's adopted, this triggers the next phase of the whole steps in this process, developing a comprehensive plan. But this has to be done first, so that everybody can look at the document and say, okay. And within here, you're going to want to do some things, within the codification. One of the issues we just talked about with Mr. Ward, is maybe, planning commission, borough council may want to redefine that core commercial district, and say, okay, maybe you don't want it all to be business solely in the core commercial, because getting small businesses now to operate in, in a building, a small law firm, accounting firm, engineering firm, there's going to be enough space around for them to do that. Maybe using some of the, if someone wants to manage a core commercial for residential, allowing them to do it as long as it doesn't encompass another reason. So there's some things you may want to consider moving forward with this codification. There's some other things you may be able to, to do that would assist growth in the borough. There's some other things you may be able to, to do that would assist growth in borough, if it's not commercial, they give it in.
Questions, anybody? All right, good business, uh, small wireless organs up here.
So, this little gem, you're reared up, reared up a couple of years ago, and the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs, P S A B. Uh, P S A's, which is the Association of Townships, uh, Supervisors, um, P N D A, and several other organizations with the help of, is it Cullen?
Yeah, Noverde.
Noverde, getting, uh, Daniel Cullen, who interacts with a lot of municipalities on cable franchises, and those types of arrangements with municipalities and these cable operators. They interacted as well in this, and we came, they came up with this, uh, Act Fifty that really determines how we can, uh, we can allow these cell providers, these, uh, to go on, these wires, wired to our, our company. Now, we really can't affect them much, but just by making them give us a plan, a permit, and saying, here's what we plan to do, uh, they won't just show up when they feel. Right. So, some of the things that are important, the Pennsylvania Municipal Electric Association, which was, had a, had a dog in this fight, was the pole attachment fees. Because we don't let, just let people put anything on our pole without payments, all right? But, you know, they can do it to their own poles, Horizon, but they can't do it to our poles, so they have to pay us, and that's all spelled out in Act Fifty, and then the ordinance as well. Now, the important part of this is it was adopted in July, um, by the state. We have till the end of October to adopt it, or they can do whatever they want, without telling us what we do. So if we don't adopt this by the end of October, we won't be able to go back and get pole attachment fees, and they can put their, do whatever they want on any one of our poles without telling us. To be adopted before the end, they have to come in with a permit, pay the permit fee, and maybe pole attachment fee. So that's why the urgency, and someone at P N D A, they said, well, why are we seeing this in September, was P N D A buying? Well, our legal, uh, advisors with P N D A had to go through the whole act itself, because they were part of the whole discussion, the lobbying group was part of the whole interaction with the state legislator on this, with the annual, not the law. So they had to go through the whole act, read it, and make sure that this ordinance did not violate any of their rights under the act. Okay? And protect the boroughs, the thirty-five of this, you know, collective systems, as best they could. So that's why it took them so long, and we got it September, borough councils heard about it last week, or last meeting, now they're going to have it. If there's something in here that we have to change in the future, we can make an amendment to it, but doing it now gives us that opportunity to have, then give us permit, uh, some permits, and the pole attachment fees, which are very.
So, in your experience with, probably the building, is there any regular in here? Makes sense, right?
Well, the five G network is not as big a problem here. Uh, they could probably do five G here because of the density, a lot easier than they could in downtown, in, uh, Harley Street. Okay? That's where it lies the problem, making that continuity of five G for everyone. Here, here it's, it's, it's easier, maybe put one on South Main Street, you know, on the four o'clock of South Main Street, on the two hundred o'clock of South Main Street, West Wall Street, I mean, they, they could have everybody connected in a short period of time, five G. You know, municipality seven, that's once for a while, thirty-one or even, that's not a problem, the problem is outside. And, and connecting all of those municipalities that are spread out, now they have to put more of these aspects. But remember, what the, what this is, is, who doesn't have one of these? Okay? Uh, eleven-year-old grandson, uh, he's got a lot of, he's forty-nine. Okay? He was supposed to be here, he was here, Fisher wasn't good here, so he went here. And he didn't tell his mom, because he had no way to tell his mom, now he has a way to tell. But you, you know what I'm saying, so now you have, you have eleven-year-olds who are using the air. The next thing is going to be six G, ten G, twelve G, or out of. All right? So if those five G's, are they going to show up in the borough, yes they are, but at least we're going to say, okay, here's, right, you can put it here, you can put it here, you can interfere with our electricity.
Wait, anybody have any questions?
Our, remember, the pole attachment fee were, were key to it, as opposed to, we've had people attach for our poles, not belts, you find out who they are, we cut the electric. We don't want to have to do that with the five G.
And so, so what do you need us to do on this?
Uh, there's nothing, it was courtesy, because it's a, it's an ordinance, it's not a land use ordinance, it's going to be, it's going to have its own section in the, uh, in the code ordinance, it was created in a section.
Mike, what are those, by the way, how many poles do we have?
We own about a hundred and fifty, uh, electric poles in the borough, Horizon is four G. So if we had this, we had this, I had this discussion with eight previously. We let Horizon utilize our poles, and they let us utilize their poles. Yeah. And we're, they don't know that.
And what is the total pole count?
Uh, I don't, but I know they have, they have some good one.
What's our attachment?
For this, it's two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
And. Yeah, they make it up. But it's all set by, by the, uh, the app.
All right, very good. Uh, zoning here, you're working the building of this?
And it's funny to see that, um, Mr. Weimar is, uh, asking to have, uh, this, uh, overhang, uh, permanent covering on his patio, rather than, uh, ten coverings that he has. He wants a permanent cover, so that people can sit out there, supposed to be here, up until, I guess, November, and here we did cut off what's, uh, over, uh, off the back. But at that hearing, um, I'll make sure that he's aware that council did, uh, grant him permission to utilize that patio, but there were constraints within that, uh, that use allowance.
So what's some, some of the constraints?
Time, usage, hours, hours of operation, uh, and length.
Days or something?
And not, yeah, and not past, um, October, I want to say fifteen, I'm not sure, I'd have to go back. It was, it was a resolution that was passed. It sounded like. Yeah. Yeah, there's some things he was allowed to do, and he thought, so he's allowed to do business, he can't do that.
Has he been pretty good, you know that?
I don't know how to be. Maybe you can, like, so.
We got it. So usually just more supplies.
I think, I haven't had any, I mean.
Just, just hold.
You know, I had a very, of course, just a lot around, I just, you know, I heard.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, action drivers?
None.
Okay. Anybody got one? Okay, next meeting will be, uh, let me go back to the first. I think we should, first.
I'm going to measure it here.
Senator? I'll say hi.
Hi.
Yes.
Yeah. Good job.